For April 20th, 2020, call us to order and call upon Councilmember Lauren Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask for a moment of silence. Now, if everyone would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Next, Kristin Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Proton Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
All present and accounted for. Thank you all for joining us remotely tonight. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of April 16, or April 6 of 2020. Are there any changes or corrections? I am observing the council. No one has indicated that they wish to call it into question. Therefore, the minutes of April 6 are hereby approved. Next, we have the public comment on issues not scheduled on our agenda. Kristin Rush, do we have anybody signed in to address us directly? I know we've got some email submitted questions. And are we going to be dealing with those now? Are we dealing with those during the town hall? Or what's the, what's the wish of the clerk?
I don't believe there's any, but Bruce could answer that question.
Yeah, we have no public comments for the meeting, Mr. Mayor, and those other email ones. We will get into the town hall.
Very good. Okay, I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for new business. We have Ms. Miller, are you prepared to make a motion on first reading?
Absolutely, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 20-002 in ordinance amending section 78-292, 78-295, 78-298, and 78-299 of Article 5 Rights of Way of Chapter 78, Public Improvements of the City of Arvada Code, and Council Bill 20-010 in ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and the City of Blackhawk for the use of augmentation stations all be approved on first reading, or both be approved on first reading. Order published in full and public hearings set for May 4, 2020 at 6:15 PM.
Motion for approval. I'll do a roll call. Mr. Marriott?
Nope. Oh, yes, sorry.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Okay, the screen moves around on me periodically, so I try to do them in the order I'm seeing them, and then we get bumped around. Mayor votes yes, that passes 7 to 0. Thank you.
That's for me, too.
Ms. Miller, did I miss you on your motion? Sorry.
That's all right.
It passed the 7-0. We have, so that takes care of our first readings. Next, again, we have a session for public comment. I'm assuming since we didn't have any public comment during the first opportunity, that there is still no public comment at this point. So we'll move on to reports from city council. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to report, I've been contacted by and spoken to several or a number of businesses who were the recipients of the business recovery loans provided by the city and for AIDA and the Urban Renewal Authority, along with help with the chamber. And each and every one of them has indicated that this has been a big deal to them. It's very important. Will absolutely make a difference in the operation of their business. And they're all very complimentary on the city for both acting on this and then acting so quickly and acting in a, in a fashion by which they could accommodate it and do it quick. So I want to say, one, thanks to the city for their participation in it, but also thanks to the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority and their board for participating, the Arvada Economic Development Association and their board for participating, and of course, the Chamber of Commerce for being a part of this as well. I think this is a big, big deal and very important for the small businesses here in Arvada.
Good comments. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I was actually going to mention the same thing, that I've had some contact with some local businesses. And so I appreciate Mr. Marriott's update on that. I heard some of the very same things, and businesses are very appreciative of that support and that bridge. And so I think that was a great, a great move by all parties involved. Just wanted to give a couple of quick updates on a couple of the committees I'm on. Mr. Pfeiffer and I are both on the Jeffco R1 Schools Coordinating Committee. And this week, we'll be meeting virtually to, again, work on the Myers Pool and that conversation around the Myers Pool and what can be and should be and ought to be done to ensure that that facility is safe, or a new facility can be built. So that's, I just want to let people know that we're continuing to have those discussions, and it's a very important discussion between Apex, the City of Arvada, and Jefferson County Schools. Next, I wanted to update each of you, as well as those who are watching, that in my role as a board member for the Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation, we have hired a new CEO of that corporation, who I believe will begin first week of May, I believe, May 6, whatever that first Monday or Tuesday is. And very excited, his name is Jens Hansen, I think. All of a sudden, I've lost his name in my mind. But coming from South Carolina, will be a great addition to Jefferson County, Jeffco EDC, and the work that will continue on behalf of the Jefferson County businesses through this recovery. He's been involved in several conversations over the last several weeks with both the staff at Jeffco EDC, as well as board members, to ensure that, you know, when he hits the ground, he hits the ground running pretty fast. So again, just appreciate the work that the city team has done and will continue to do over the next several days and weeks for our local businesses. That's all I've got.
Good. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to echo Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones's positions regarding the loans program. I think it's very important for our community and for our businesses. Second, I got a couple of emails this week. Apparently, the appointees to the city boards have now received their letters, and they were reaching out to say thank you to those of us who interviewed them. So I just want to say again, congratulations to everyone who reached out, who interviewed and was appointed to a board. God knows, we need your service, so thank you. I also wanted a quick update. The fire board, Mr. Pfeiffer and I participate on that together. We had a call on Monday where we were informed, some very exciting news. In the search for the new fire chief, they extended the offer to the deputy fire chief, of course, which left the deputy position open. One of the interviewees for the chief position was then extended an offer for the deputy chief position and accepted. They were very excited about it. So we're very excited to sort of have both of those positions filled in the same round of interviews. Very, very exciting. And then, if you will all allow me a quick plug outside of boards, we have all these wonderful programs to aid our city businesses, as well as our residents. But there are so many hurting this time. I want to extend a really quick just thank you again to all of the nonprofits in our city who are serving residents, who are stepping up in so many different ways, and do a quick plug for a drive that I am working on. I have partnered with Hope House Colorado, which, for those unfamiliar, is a charity here in District 2 that serves teen and young mothers all over the metro region. Get on their feet, be able to support themselves and their families. And they have had dozens of their mothers lose their jobs in this economic crisis. So we are doing diapers, formula, and grocery gift cards drive, and Need the Bakery. One of our local small businesses is the collection center for that. And so just letting people know about that. If they feel so inclined, please help out if possible. It's for a really important cause, and we'll be going on for the next two weeks.
That's a great place, and the recent expansion was very successful, and they really helped out a bit of important need. Mr. Pfeiffer, you're next.
Well, Councilmember Simpson kind of covered, I was going to bring up the fire chief appointment and the deputy fire chief, and she covered that. I just wanted to, you know, it's been a little foggy of what I've said or not said, because we haven't met that much. So I'll just make sure, you know, I repeat what, what means a lot to me around the fire chief selection. But, you know, that process and that engagement and that level of support to go through that process, just like the city does when we go through a city manager, police chief, or whatever, was very thorough and in-depth. And I just wanted to thank the Arvada Fire Protection District in including myself and Councilmember Simpson into the process and giving city council an opportunity to weigh in on that chief, who, you know, will provide guidance to a very important first responder organization that services our city. So just wanted to highlight that. And the last thing, I do want to highlight the deputy chief, who will be coming in. He is from Memphis, Tennessee. I can't argue with him at all, because it's a draw. You know, everyone loves the Southern draw. But, you know, the gentleman researched our community, wants to retire in our community, and loves our community. So, you know, to get somebody of that caliber and what he did or does for Memphis Fire is unbelievable. That would get somebody of that caliber into our, our small community compared to Memphis. So it was a, it was a two-for-one process, and I'm excited for the fire district and where they're going with their leadership. So last thing is, is there's an election around the corner. I just want to plug in that everyone needs to vote. Even special districts are important, and that's in a few weeks. So if you haven't gotten ballots or anything, make sure you do, and it's important to vote. That's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
And to be clear on that, that's for both the fire district and the Apex district. So if you haven't previously signed up for absentee ballots, you can still do that. Go to their respective websites. They've got information on how to get the ballot. Very good. Ms. Miller, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to give a huge shout out to the businesses and the citizens of Arvada, doing amazing job with the stay-at-home order and social distancing. I'm proud of all of us. This is not easy. I'm proud of you guys for doing what you're doing and helping to stay safe and keep your neighbors safe. I appreciate you. As the stay-at-home order comes to a close on the 26th, and we reopen with safer at home, I know that our community is going to stay safe and keep our neighbors safe. So thank you for all you're doing. I know this is not easy.
Ms. Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to give a shout out to the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee. They've been very busy working on providing information to citizens here in Arvada about the upcoming waste hauling effort. And they're also doing activities to celebrate Earth Day this Wednesday, the 22nd, I believe it is, yes. And I also want to thank my neighbors, who are doing a great job at hooting and hollering at 8 o'clock on behalf of our wonderful essential workers, who are working under really less-than-ideal situations to keep our families and neighbors and friends safe throughout this pandemic. So thank you to them.
Ms. Miller, did you have another point? I just didn't take your hand down. Okay, this technology, you know, for an old guy like me learning this stuff's been an experience. Let me certainly join all of the council and our incredible team at the city with the congratulations for the loan program. I think it's been a great asset to our community, and frankly, we've been a leader in the region on this. And it makes me very proud that we really took the bull by the horns and did a terrific job on a very quick timeline, just showing how nimble and efficient local government is compared to state and federal governments. So again, congratulations, Mr. Devin, to you and your entire team on that. One point I want to make on this, and I make it every chance I get, you know, these are intended as bridge loans. And to the extent there are businesses out there who are able to get the bridge loan from us and then got their PPP money from the federal government, we'd really like it if you would pay back the loan portion sooner rather than later. If you can go ahead and pay that back now, it gives us the ability to push those dollars out to other needy businesses. So think about it. I know it's tough times, but if you're one of those businesses who's been fortunate enough to get both our temporary loan and then get the PPP assistance, please consider paying back the loan portion, keep the grant portion. You know, you're going to be paying it back in 2021 anyway. If you can help us out by doing it now, I think it'll help more of our small businesses in the community. So let's, let's pay it forward a little if we can. So, you know, other things that we're doing, I can tell you that from the metro mayor's perspective, we have been very involved in discussions at both the local, regional, state, and national level to try to get as much assistance for our communities as we can. We have a great regional cooperation here in the metro area, and you all are involved in so many other ways in, in doing the same things. But even us mayors are all getting along right now and working our darndest to help us get through this. And I can't stop my comments without, again, thanking our citizens. You know, we've, we've been blessed that the number of fatalities we've had in Arvada have been fewer than what was originally forecast. I know people who have gotten sick. They've been able to get over it. But, you know, it's certainly a situation where that by keeping the social distancing, by making the huge sacrifice that our residents and our businesses made, it's helped us get to a better place. And it's going to be important that we continue to observe some social distancing, that we wear masks when we're out in public, so that we don't get the second wave. Because my fear is that if we get a major second wave, we're going to be back staying at home for a longer period of time. So continue to think smart, continue to take appropriate steps. We want to get our businesses reopened, but we want them to be able to stay open. So I thank you all for what you're doing. And with that, Mr. Devin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to spend a few, a little bit of time talking about the revised review, revised schedule for future public hearings, workshops, and presentations. And I think in starting that, what I wanted to mention is that we probably need to take another look at that, given the governor's press conference today. We did anticipate that our workshop on April the 27th and the council meeting on May the 4th, actually, the council meeting on May the 4th would be a combined council business meeting and workshop. We did anticipate that those would be done remotely, scheduled as remote meetings. Part of the reason is while we anticipated that the governor's stay-at-home order would be lifted for, effective at the end of the day on April the 26th, we were concerned about whether or not we would have all the social distancing and other kinds of conditions actually met prior to those two meetings. And then the other thing is that we were also anticipating that some people, even if the stay-at-home order is lifted, some people may hesitate to go out in public. And so we wanted to plan for those to be remote meetings on April the 27th and May the 4th. On April the 27th is a workshop, and we have, for that, for that workshop, we have the .04 trolley, the micro mobility and traffic calming programs, and then the Walker parking study, which you see now on your screen. So we would plan to go ahead with those three items on April the 27th. And then on May the 4th, the business meeting, I'm sorry, the workshop portion of the meeting would, would include an update on the Myers Pool. And I think you already heard Councilmember Jones mention the Myers Pool in his comments just now. That meeting is actually tomorrow with our partners at Apex and the school district, where we'll be looking at the applicability of the current site, plus a portion of the Water Elementary School area that we would require for that. And it would be our hope that between the meeting tomorrow and the meeting, the workshop meeting on May the 4th, that we can really narrow down that site as the site that we would like to go out and talk to the community about, engage the neighborhood in and around that area to make sure that they know what's going on and that we're able to communicate what the impacts could be of that, of that facility being built, so that we can really get to start on the planning and funding and design and so forth of that particular project. On April, excuse me, May the 11th, we wanted to talk about purchase limits and short-term rental. And then we also wanted to hold a workshop on waste hauling and really reengage the community on waste hauling. On, with respect to waste hauling, we were looking at introducing that on, at the meeting of maybe, I think it's May the 18th, we wanted to introduce it on
Mark, it looks like you're going to have an open house for waste hauling on May 18th, sometime during the week of May 18th.
Yeah, we're going to have an
Potentially a second one, the week of June 1st.
I'm sorry, I lost, I lost track of my, of my form here. We want to, we actually want to introduce it on May the 4th and then have the, have the workshop the following Tuesday on May the 11th, and then also have an open house on the week of May 18th, and possibly another open house on the week of June 1st. And, and the reason why we want to do that is what we heard from council on, that, on the evening that we talked to you about this two weeks ago, is that you wanted us to move forward with these items. And we felt with, and we also felt that, that we needed to devote some additional time to the waste hauling issue and some additional public discussion around the waste hauling issue, so that we're sure that people that have questions and want to know, get all the information they can about it, or have access to that. So that's why we looked at the May 11th date for a workshop. And then, as, as you see there, Mayor and Council, the open house meetings on May, the week of May 18th and week of June 1st, if needed. And then we would look at the building and fire code update on, on June the 8th, and then discussion of tobacco and vaping on June the 8th as well. Before I go on to the public hearing schedule, are there any questions about what we've outlined for the workshops?
I don't see any hands raised, so.
Okay, Bruce, if you could put up the public hearing slide. We talked a little bit about this already. Thank you for your actions tonight to, for the first reading approval of the IGA with, with Blackhawk and the Chapter 78 Public Improvements. I think the one meeting that probably deserves some discussion perhaps tonight, based on what we heard today from the governor, is the rehearing of Grandview Station. We set that for, right now, we're proposing that for May 18th. If, if we believe that there will be a lot of public discussion, which I believe there will be, and we're concerned about whether people feel safe and whether we'll have the, the ability to really, you know, host people fairly, that might want to weigh in on the Grandview Station rehearing, we might have to push that one back to another date. And perhaps now would be the time to see if, if council members, what council members feel about that particular public hearing.
I'll, I'll start out. I hate to move it from the perspective that I think both sides need to get a decision so that it can be resolved one way or the other. I, I'm more open to a hybrid where if public wants to participate remotely, that they can, that, you know, in terms of council being present or not present, that might be a hybrid for that one as well. So like we did with the first meeting, where some of us were in council chambers and others participated remotely. I'm, at least I'm open to that kind of concept. But I hate to keep dragging this thing on. I think we need to, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down it. So Ms. Miller, you're next.
I agree. I think that we, if, if at all possible, if we could have it, there have got to be ways that people can come in and give public testimony with, and still maintain social distancing. We see it at the grocery stores. We've got to be able to do that in our council chambers. Everybody doesn't have to be in there at once, and the weather's nice again. So, or we could hold Council at Stanger and put 10-foot-by-10-foot squares. That's how they're doing it in other countries, and everybody gets their square. So there are creative ways to do this.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
You took the words out of my mouth. I agree with you, Mayor and Councilmember Miller, or Mayor Proton Miller. I think that if we can find a hybrid approach, that everyone can share their opinions. Also, we should probably maybe encourage folks to write in. That can be put into the public record as well. You know, try to encourage communication through either letters, emails, or whatever's best means. But that could also be another way to make sure we get all of the public testimony.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, I would agree with that. I, I would hate to see it postponed. But at the same time, I do feel we should do something creative to keep groups of people out of City Hall. And I would be in favor of a hybrid, because I'm personally not quite ready to go back into normal activities until we can be assured by our public health officials that, that would be safe.
Hey, Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same. I think as long as we can allow public comment by whatever means the person making public comment wants to. So that means those who feel that they want to make it in person can make it in person, and those who feel like they would rather make it electronically can. I think that's the way to go. And, and honestly, I, I don't see why we couldn't do it with, have the council be the same way. Those of us who, anyone who feels comfortable in person should be in person. Anyone who doesn't, maybe shouldn't. And, and everyone gets to decide for themselves that way.
Very good. I don't see any other comments on that. Does that give you direction, Mr. Devin? Oh, Lauren, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, I was, I was just going to re-echo everyone. I agree that it should be. And I think we need to look at keeping the hybrid model for the foreseeable future. We're going to have numerous residents who have significant conditions that make them more prone to this virus, who are planning on locking down for the foreseeable future, even after restrictions are lifted, until perhaps there's vaccine or assurances that things are truly safe. So in order to accommodate the needs of those residents, we probably just need to be looking at the hybrid model for a while and assume that's going to be our default for probably a year or so.
Well, I hope not for a full year, but
I hope not, but.
Yeah. Mr. Devin, anything else?
No, I think we got our direction on, on May 18th. We'll keep the, that, that item on the agenda for that day. And I think really, the, the comments around a hybrid approach probably could be applied to the other meetings that we have on this schedule, at least, well, really, all the other meetings on the schedule, you know, going through, you know, into early July. So we'll figure out a way to properly social distance and, and manage that. And, you know, we'll, we will certainly have the benefit of the, you know, of the city attorney, who I'm sure will be able to help us with, you know, kind of the current thinking about dealing with quasi-judicial matter, matters. And we'll figure it out between our, our atrium and, as, as I think a couple of council members said, the weather should be nice outside. You know, we'll figure something out to, to be able to accommodate people that would like to be able to speak in person, as well as those who would like You know, we'll figure something out to to be able to accommodate people that would like to be able to speak in person, as well as those who would like to do it remotely.
Yeah, we can just limit the number of people who are in council chambers at a time. They were they were doing that at Apple Jack's yesterday, so I know it can be done. Okay, anything else from you, Mr. Devin?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Morris, anything from competent legal counsel?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Okay, I will then adjourn the meeting for April the twentieth, and we will now be going into a town hall meeting. And do we stay on this line? I believe we do, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, what's happening is Channel Eight is switching over the feed to make the town hall a new feed, if you will. And so already just sit tight, and when they're ready to go, then we'll start talking, and that means we're up and rolling, okay?
Very good.